This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, good evening. I'm Dylan Maudsley, Vice Chair of Southampton School Committee. It is now 6:00 PM. Call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Southampton School Committee to order. Four members present. Chair John Lumber is not present. Being as it is September 11th, I'd like to take a moment of silence at the beginning of tonight's meeting in remembrance of those who were lost during that tragic event, as well as those who were lost and gave their lives in the ensuing conflicts. Thank you. Moving on to our first order of business is the approval of minutes from June 12th, 2024.
I have one correction that I want to make. Under "New Business Item C," where it says, the last line, it says "The committee voted unanimously to approve the appointment." I did not vote in favor of the appointment, so that needs to be corrected.
Voted four to one?
Three to one. Margaret was agreed.
Three to one. Okay. Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve as amended?
I second.
Motion made by Kim, seconded by Jen. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
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 All abstain.
Motion carries three in favor, one abstention. Public comment?
You, in the back. There isn't.
Hearing, none. Circulation of warrants, I believe. Do we have warrants? Are those all done electronically now?
Yeah, I would say we all signed them.
So we're good. Those went around, I believe, last week. Announcements correspondence. The school committee did receive a letter from a community member regarding potentials hearings on toxic chemicals.
Yeah, I got that today, right?
So just note that that was received. I will allow Mr. Lumber to respond, should he choose as chair, and just note that that was received by the committee. Okay?
Just for a second, what is the procedure on that? Are we supposed to respond if something comes through like that to all of us, or does John respond to those things?
The chair is technically the official spokesperson for the committee. If you wanted to engage in an individual conversation with a constituent, that is always and 100% your right to do so. I just would ask, if you do reply, do not reply all, because that would create an open meeting violation, because you would have a quorum of five committee members on that email chain. So if you had questions for this individual about that specific thing, or questions about that, you are, of course, welcome to email them and follow up from there.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna write back to her, because I'm a fellow breast cancer survivor, but that would be a more personal thank you for, you know, this, and that's but John would reply officially.
Okay. Principals report.
Okay, here's the North School Principal's report for September 11th. Just a little recap of summer school. The students who needed extended summer school, your services attended summer school from July 8th to August 3rd. Thank you to the teachers and staff who endured the summer heat to make learning fun and engaging. Our custodians also endured some very hot temps this summer preparing our building for students and staff, and I know that you, some of you were able to come for the walk-through at the end of August, and I think it was sparkling. Our school adjustment counselor, Beth Gordon, submitted her retirement letter, and she'll be leaving in November. The position was posted over the summer, just to, I didn't have this information in June. We have hired a new adjustment counselor. I don't want to announce, I could announce. Her name is Shante Roka, actually, and she'll start November 6th, so they'll have a couple weeks of training together before Beth Gordon leaves. And then our preschool SLP, speech-language pathologist resigned in June, and we are continuing to look for a replacement and hope to have someone on board soon. I did hire, tried to hire, three different people over the summer. It was posted. We didn't, we got four applicants. And of the four applicants that we interviewed, we, I offered it three different times, and people did not accept the position, maybe because it's .9, they wanted more money, you know, it just, it just didn't work out for their schedules. And so it's still posted, and now we're looking at possibly contracting out for that service. And I know the preschool started last week, so it is something that we're trying to move on quickly.
That's a lot more expensive, isn't it, to contract?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
So, did you actually receive feedback from people about the pay not being enough, or is this, are you surmising?
No, I, I think that for a .9 position, there were three candidates. One, it didn't work out with her schedule, so say you apply for the position, you know that it's part-time, it doesn't exactly say how part-time it is in the posting. Once you get through the application process, then you realize it's .9, and it's Monday through Thursday and half a day on Friday. That didn't work with their daycare situation, with their young children. And then one was someone who works year-round on a contract, so is thinking they're gonna make a lot more money than 184 days at .9, so that was a problem. And then the last one didn't, I don't think wanted to leave in the middle of a school year, it's the beginning of a school year, but didn't feel like when it came right down to telling their boss that they were going to leave, they couldn't do it. So said, "I'm sorry, I can't accept the position."
Is it possible to put .9 in the job description? Because I'm wondering if people aren't wanting to go for it because they think part-time means part-time.
It does, I believe it says .9, it just doesn't say Monday through Thursday, full-time, you know, half-day on Friday. Maybe I should change that, so that when you apply, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
What is gonna be done for the kids that currently need services in preschool?
I am looking at having our two, we have two SLPs in our building already that serve us, and we're going to have to spread the wealth.
Okay.
I'm looking at that now. I really thought I was gonna have someone.
I can't stand having to look all.
Oops.
Okay.
Margaret.
I know, I know. I am.
All right, so I'll keep going. Last year, when we were in the preliminary stages of looking at our entrance and exit criteria for our neurodiverse students and their IEPs, we took a look at our special ed programming of all students. And as we know, special ed regulations require us to provide students with supplementary aids and services within their general ed classroom if their needs can be met and they can make progress on their goals within this setting. We should be measuring progress of students within the general ed system with supports and services within their classrooms before pulling them out for services. At the same time, we were looking about, we were looking at the new IEP and implementation for this year. Typically, at Norris, our special ed students were, our special ed services were happening outside. We were pulling students out of general ed and servicing them in the C grid outside of the general ed classroom. And we quickly knew we needed to solve the problem, therefore we discussed concentrating students who needed support into the same classroom, so that the students' education, their special ed teacher and their general ed teacher could work together as a team, and so that more students with disabilities could be supported within their classrooms, which is best for everyone. We knew that students who continued to need system, some students would continue to need that systematic and explicit reading instruction due to reading disabilities in grades three and up, and would likely to continue to need those services in small groups, utilizing that methodology dictated in their IEPs, always, of course, following the IEP. Our individual teams began discussing this idea with families in their IEP team meetings, one student at a time. And then the families were told, and parents were excited about the support within the classroom with limited pull-out sessions. So far, it seems that many are excited about this work, and it's a great opportunity. So it's not that what we were doing was wrong, and it's not that it wasn't decided at team meeting, it was all decided at team meetings. But now we're trying to include students in general ed with the support inside the classroom rather than pulling them out unless they need that explicit reading instruction. It's a shift. We're doing some professional development. We had a faculty meeting on Monday with Lisa Decker, who is a guru in the area. She's not from the area, but many people have utilized her services in this area. And we're also following up with a full day of professional development October 15th for all of my staff, and then the 16th and the 17th, she's going to be, someone from her, from, to Teach Global, which are her colleagues, will be visiting the following two days to work with grade-level specific teachers in general ed. So we're helping the general ed teachers and the special ed teachers to support all students in the classroom. It's a really huge endeavor, and it was started, like I said, last year, once we started looking at every single IEP individually and what was best for students. So you may hear about that. We're excited about the work, and so far, the special ed teachers going into the general ed classroom and helping those students has worked out wonderfully. Our enrollment is at 478 students. We have 475 plus three drop-ins and two out of district students. Our professional development, I just told you about, actually, I got ahead of myself. The PTO Ice Cream Social was held on September 4th. It was a great event, so well-attended. I just heard Chris Falls tell me that she drove by and the traffic was, everybody was parked everywhere, as usual. We had our first fire drill yesterday, and all students and staff did an amazing job evacuating the building. Firefighters visited the preschool and the kindergarten classes prior to pulling the alarm to let them know that it's just a drill, it's not scary, and if they had any questions or concerns, they answered them. Everyone was aware that it was happening before it happened. I also sent home a follow-up letter to let the parents know that it did happen yesterday. Haven't received any complaints, except for one. You know, correspondence is fine. And so far, the opening of the school year has been, has been really good. I feel like everybody's on point, so really excited about the school year.
Lisa, after the tragic event in Georgia, have you had parents concerned about reunification strategies, or anything like that, that we need to be, you know, thinking about for planning purposes?
I have not received any concerns about that, although we do work with the Southampton Police Department to update our policies, our procedures about lockdown and reunification, and we do, we are working with them now to schedule those dates. We did a reunification drill two years ago on a half-day. I think, I don't know if you knew about that, but, you know, it's something that we, we should schedule another one. Last time, we didn't have kids. Maybe we can get kids to come this time.
Right, right.
It was on a half-day in May, and they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna come, they wanted to be with their friends, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions in the principals' report? I was just wondering what's going on, since it was a major overhaul on how IEPs are done. Has there been any school-wide training on that? Is there expected to be? What's the plan?
Yes, so a couple of the teachers, I don't know, was he talking to you or me? I'm sorry.
I think he was looking at you, but you go right ahead.
It's totally fine. I didn't want to overstep. A few of our teachers went last year for an overall training, and then this year, we have, my educational team leader is going to provide a one-hour overview for all staff on the half-day, which is September 25th, 23rd or 25th, I keep getting that date mixed up for some reason.
25th.
Okay, and then our new Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction Assessment sent out a bunch of opportunities for people to sign up for professional development, and we have some money in grants to pay for it. So I have about seven special ed staff that have signed up to get that training. So it's sort of all happening, you know, at the same time. We had some IEP meetings today. We sent out a letter today to families of students who have IEPs, along with the Parents Rights brochure that we always give to families. So if you didn't hear anything, it's because you probably don't have a student that has an IEP. So we're trying to sort of coordinate that, and then my, my educational team leader, ETL, is also willing to do a parent workshop for those who are interested to come and learn about the new IEP. So it's all happening.
Is the change recent? In the IEPs?
It's starting this year for everyone.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah, so it is recent, yeah.
Anything else? Superintendent's report. I'll introduce Dr. Vito Perone, our new superintendent. I think this is our first meeting with you, so welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
And take it away, Dr. Perone.
All right. So I did share a report with you, and I'm just gonna hit the high points, and of course, anything you have for questions, please ask. I did want to follow up a little bit. We hired Amy Drake, and this is part of my report, as the new Director of People's Services. She was formerly working at LPVEC, which was in West Springfield, the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. And so in my role in West Springfield, I worked with her, and she's, she's a dynamite individual, brings a wealth of experience to the role, and she also went through all the trainings that DESI was putting out in her former role. So she is very conversant in the specifics of the new IEP with the focus on data and the need for teachers to be able to take data and use data to generate goals that are measurable and help students move forward in a positive way. So I, we had an all-admin meeting today where all the principals, vice principals, and the central office leadership team met, and so a little bit was talked about with the new IEP and PD and the opportunities that we face moving forward to make sure that the students whose IEPs are coming up for review and, and signatures in the, in the fall are going to be in a good place. But as we move forward, we're gonna be able to prepare more thoroughly for those IEPs that are coming up in the winter and the spring. And we can certainly, we could bring Amy Drake in here to talk about that, if that's something that you're interested in. Amy started three whole days ago, but she rounded out the team of the director levels. Dawn Scaparati is here with us tonight, and because the budget was part of my report, I wanted to give Dawn an opportunity to introduce herself and be here to answer any questions or to kind of give her, how many days is it now for you?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, all right. She's a veteran.
You are a veteran.
I mean, she hasn't hit two months yet, so we'll cut her some slack, but she's been on board and really focused on the business office and identifying what needs to happen in order to dig us out of the things that were dauntingly challenging us in the past, but also to set the stage for a clean FY '25 and a new FY '26. Michael Fridette, our new Assistant Superintendent, came on August 12th, and he has done an amazing job wearing multiple hats as Amy came on board and Dawn came on board. So he was able to really use his experience from East Long Meadow as the, the Director of People's Services, or SED Director, actually, there, to help us transition to Amy and her tenure here. So we're feeling really good about the direction that the central office team is going. I am very confident in the people that we've assembled. We have a great team, a lot of positive energy going on, and we took that on a roadshow the first week of school, brought them, brought everyone to the schools to introduce the team, and to share some slides with, with the schools and the faculty, the principals, to really help them understand our vision and what we want to do and what we want to be for them. Because ultimately, you know, on my whiteboard at the, at the office, it says, "What can I do to help?" That's the philosophy that we have at the central office. What can we do to support and provide resources to the principals, so they can do similarly for the teachers and the students? So that's kind of the mindset we're bringing, and it's really a keep-it-simple message that we're putting out there around collaboration and communication, transparency, and community. And everything underpinned by a real solid belief and compassion for what we're doing and how we're doing it. The, it's not lost on us that there are challenges in the financial side of the business office, but we, I feel, have put together a really strong team. We understand the challenges ahead of us, and we are putting a plan together, and Dawn is doing an amazing job kind of digging in and identifying what needs to be done, what resources we need to bring to bear to move us in that positive direction as we go through the '24-'25 school year and prepare for the next fiscal budget. So I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but if Dawn, you wanted to step up to the microphone and just introduce yourself, say hello, is that okay?
Sure.
All right. It is.
Live broadcast.
Live broadcast.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, we do know you, so if you don't want to talk.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity, Vito. And I wanted to say that I'm really looking forward to being back at my alma mater. I won't say what year I graduated, it was a while ago. And this morning, three students came in to interview new, I don't know who else they interviewed. Did they interview you?
They are interviewing, I asked, I invited them to interview the central office team, because one of the things that I heard is that no one really knew us, knew the central office team, what we did, why we were here, et cetera. So I wanted the students to really have a, an understanding of who we were, what our role was, and how we support them through our responsibilities at the central office.
Okay, so that was very interesting. And one of the things I think that I talked with the students about at that time was really, what's between your years that will propel you forward in your own self-talk? So right now, I have to really live by those words, because everything that I'm doing, I'm uncovering one problem after another after another, and it's very daunting. And I think that the hardest thing is that my focus has always been truly, how can I help? And how can I help the principals? How can I help the school committee? And right now, I'm not able to deliver the information that people are looking for. I think the principals really want to know some basic things. What is my budget? What am I spending? What's the variance? What do I have left to spend? And those, that basic information doesn't exist right now. The previous year, I think, this last year, people describe it as fairly traumatic, and it's had a lasting impression on principals and others who need information from the financials or above the financials. And what I want to say about that is, we have to recreate all of 2024's numbers, much of 2024's numbers. And in school, the prime, the majority of the expenses are, is in salary line codes, are in the salary line codes, and that, because of the year, we switched payroll, how we were paying people, it went from the infinite vision, it went from the system that the school was using to HARPers. So HARPers, the payroll service, they're paying people. So everybody got paid, and what has to happen now is it has to get back from HARPers into the general ledger. The general ledger is just the term used to capture all the financial data, and some of the financial data isn't in there for '24. At this particular point in time, we should be report, we should be closing the books and reporting out on what happened in '24, and we are not prepared to do that, because '24 numbers aren't in yet. So it means asking for more extensions from DESI. It means recreating information, or it's not recreating it, it's just putting it into the, into the system. And it's just long, laborious. The only thing that I can, can compare it to is, if you hadn't kept track of your home finances for a year, and you had to recreate, reenter every check you wrote, every electronic transfer that you got, it would take a long time, and that's, that's truly what we're facing. However, what we're trying to do this year, they were doing that last year, and they were focused on '23. And focusing on '23, they tried to keep '24 going, but they fell behind, because a lot of the staff left during that period. I don't know that I'm telling you anything you don't already know, but just to say, a lot of staff left at that point. So they weren't able to keep going forward and looking back. And so what we're trying to do now is keep '25 clean, to try to keep '25 going forward while we're looking back. And we've already found some problems with '25. It has to do with how things were recorded and brought forward, and it's a lot of detailed financial stuff. But suffice it to say that we are, we have, I've identified things in the two, two days, two weeks and two days that I've been here. I've identified areas. Now what we have to do is develop a plan for how are we gonna clean up those areas. And cleaning up those areas is gonna take a while. I am new to the school environment, but I have a history of financial experience and of complicated, you know, digging out of some complicated situations. So I have confidence that it can be done, but because I am new, I'm also, Vito, I have to thank him for providing resources to augment the resources that we have. For example, I'm, in order to follow the proper licensure, I'm working with Masco, the Massachusetts Association of School Business Administrators, and following a training program for, through them, which will help me learn the things that I need to learn for my license. Additionally, it provides a plethora of people with whom to speak regarding, well, this is the situation here, what would you do? You have 10 years, you have 20 years of experience, how would you handle this? And after their jaws come back from the floor, they say, "Wow, I can't believe that this is a mess, and I can't, I've never, I've never encountered all of that." And it is true, it is, it's really, it's unbelievable, the amount of work that has to be done. And so, however, they're saying, well, one person will say, "Ooh, I know a person here who's done this, why don't you talk to that person?" So that's what I've been doing, is connecting with the people who may have been through something similar, or may have the skills to help us as we formulate a plan. So that's, that's that. The one thing that's actionable tonight for you that I would bring to you is a request to process the warrants on a bi-weekly basis. The municipalities process their warrants bi-weekly, basically in line with the Select Board's bi-weekly meetings. And what that does is it allows the timing of the invoices to, to capture things more, more timely. So for example, in, at the high school, we are, we, we have an invoice that's come through now, and in some of the towns, we've had invoices that have come through that come through with finance charges, that come through with late fees. Because of the time, the once a month of going to you and asking for your approval is not really working well. And it would be easier for you in terms of what you review, because you'd be reviewing half as much, but you'd have to do it twice in a month. And it's, it's, I think, a way to increase the accuracy within the central office and to reduce any excess fees. Now, those fees aren't gonna add up to, you know, build a library, but they, there's no reason that we should be paying finance charges or late fees. So I guess tonight, I don't know what your policies are, I don't know if you have a policy on that per se, but those, we've approached other school committees, and those school committees that don't have a policy and therefore don't have to go through a policy review, have, have approved, have reviewed it, talked about it in their meeting, and, and moved on it in that session. So far, Chesfield Goshen has, and West Hampton has. We're going to the Williamsburg meeting soon. So, and then I did approach Tom Cleary, Vito and I approached Tom Cleary regarding Hampshire Regional. They have a policy, so it has to go through the policy review, so it has to have a first read, a discussion, and a second read. So I'm not sure what your situation is here, but if you have any questions regarding the concept, then you're glad to address them.
Is central office staff that has to prepare these, are they okay with doing it twice a month?
Yes, in fact, in fact, Teresa Turner, I don't know if anybody would work with her, Teresa Turner is the one who prepares it, and she has come to me and asked about this as well. And she said that she does think that it would facilitate, well, certainly would facilitate the work she has to do with the town accountant who prepares the warrants for the Select Board.
Well, I'm fine with it, unless we have to do the policy thing. Are you?
I'm not aware of a policy. I haven't reviewed our policies. I'm not aware of it. I don't think that's specifically the timing of the issuance of the warrant. I don't think that's specifically the timing of the issuance of the warrants. To me, it's always been a paper issue, right? I mean, it used to be, we only got in the room at the same time with the, with the usage of DocuSign.
Right.
I think that's, I think it's much, I would consider that an administrative procedure and not a policy. So I don't believe that would even be within the purview of the committee to vote on. I think if the business office sends them out biweekly and requests signatures and approval, then that's what they're going to do.
Yep.
There you go.
So we just have to be sure we're checking our email to know.
Yep, check your emails.
Right, and so what we'll try to do is, we're working with the towns to understand the select board schedule, and when they need, so if the select board meets on Monday night, they need the warrant, they need it all signed by the previous Friday. So it means that we back it up, so it allows you time, sufficient time to review it. What are you, what is your typical review time? Do you want three days' notice? What do we have now? I'm not sure I even know that.
I don't think we have a set.
I think, I think the request in the past has been within 48 hours if possible. I mean, 72 would be great, but I think, because our select board meets Tuesdays.
Oh, your select board's Tuesday.
So it would probably need to be the Wednesday prior, I would guess, or the Thursday, the Wednesday or Thursday.
And I can find that out, and then we'll, we'll let you know.
Dawn, I'm sorry to interrupt, if I could make a suggestion, you know, John's not here, but I would agree that it doesn't, I don't think it's a policy. And if it's a procedure that we are initiating at the business office, then you could just communicate that with the chair and let him know, and I think that would.
Yep.
All right. So that's great, I appreciate that. In terms of, you know, more questions or general questions regarding the budget, does anybody have any questions about that?
I think we're all pretty aware of the situation that you have walked into, and so, good luck to Godsky.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. We're very happy that you're here.
Thank you so much.
Me too.
While we're pausing on that point, you know, Dawn, you've been here two weeks on this, Vito, you've been, you're a veteran at this point by two months in. You know, I, we're all very aware of the fiscal challenges we walked into. We know fiscal, you know, it sounds like fiscal year '23 still hasn't been fully reconciled yet. I would appreciate an update, if not in October, by November, at the latest of exactly what we expect for timetables regarding, not saying to get it done, but what are we looking at for reconciling '23? Where are we looking at certifying E and D for '24? And kind of have a picture of where are we at and righting the ship so that we can, because we'll be talking budgets before we know it.
Absolutely, and that's, that's part of the transparency piece, that we really want to make sure that as we identify things, we let, we let the chairs know, and then they communicate. But certainly timelines and benchmarks, deliverables are going to be communicated out.
Thank you. Would you, would you excuse me, I mean, would it be okay if I were to just leave?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming, Dawn.
All right. I have a back issue, I need resolution, so while I can still walk, I'm going to try to walk out with my product.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being so welcoming, it really makes a difference, appreciate that.
Good. Just so everyone knows, the door needed to be closed because the chorus is starting the chorsal, and that the sound does carry down the hall, so.
While we have this pause here, Dawn left, I'll direct this to you, Vito, where are we at with DESI? And I know the last time, there's lots of meetings going on with Jay Sullivan and everything about potential receivership, where do we stand in that?
Yeah, so, so my understanding around receivership is that's more of an academic?
I should say financial, financial involvement.
Interventions, there you go, okay, yeah. So really, one of the things, one of the first things I did, as I was even just considering the application, was have a conversation with my retired business manager, Carrie Sheehan, who I respect very, very much, I worked with him for nine years. And he gave me some really good advice about reaching out and communicating and making sure that I had an understanding of the reality of the situation, so that I'm going in with my eyes open. And part of that was ensuring that as I came on board and we got the team together, that we are bringing resources on to support the, Dawn, in the role that she has. And one of those resources was Carrie Sheehan himself, who is contracting with us to, to work on grants, just focused on '24 grants. And that's his focus. He and Jay Sullivan are very good, have a very good relationship, let's put it that way. And he and I met with, with Jay, and we had a conversation about what's next and what we need to do. And of course, the first things he talked about was making sure that we hit those deadlines for requests for extensions. And so that is what Dawn is working on. We are identifying the end of year report that's due, we need an extension for that. We have had conversations with the auditors, and we've already discussed the need to look at E and D down the line and getting an extension for that. So we're putting all of those pieces in place, we've gotten all the grants written to move forward, and in the ideal, we're going to identify those things that need to be addressed. We are going to file for the extensions that are necessary to keep us in good standing with DESI. And we're going to apply the resources necessary to eat that elephant, one bite at a time. And that's really what we're looking at, is we have to, grants is one piece that we need to focus on. Accounting and ledger entries that were never made, that's another thing we have to focus on. So we're putting in place contract workers with specific skills, either retired business managers like Carrie, or an accountant from a firm who is, who are, working on those projects to get us in the place we need to be. Again, with respect to the state and DESI, all the meetings I've had have been nothing but supportive and a handout for resources. And this past Friday, I met with the acting commissioner in, at the superintendent's roundtable, and we had a really good conversation, and I was able to tell him how thankful I was for the resources and the support that we're getting from the state. Because what, and what he said to me is, we don't want you to fail, right, not me personally, we don't want you to fail. And so they're going to do everything they can to make sure that we have the resources and the support we need to dig ourselves out of this hole we're in, but to also move forward in a positive way.
Great, thank you.
Did I answer the question?
No.
I'm joking.
We'll, we'll talk again in a month.
Just over on top of the budget question. Are the contracted services that are now in place, like staying, or were they only brought in because there were so much issues to go through, and then once it's all fixed, they're?
They are not FTEs. They're not, they, they weren't budgeted in that they are a position that's going to stay in central office, no. What I learned when I came in was that the central office budget was augmented to address the financial issues that were in place. We are using those resources to do just that. And we're being very mindful of the need to communicate and build trust with our stakeholders, including school committees.
So we got Point C still left, our favorite organization. Your report?
Chair's report?
Oh, you're, you're finishing out your superintendent's report?
Oh, um, Point C, well, the Souzer?
Souzer IT.
Yeah, Souzer IT. So I, I heard many different things when I came on board. One of the first things I did was I sent a Google form to the principals to ask for input. Similarly, I sent one to all the teachers in the district and asked for their input. Thematically identified those things, I identified those things that needed to be triaged with immediate effect. One of them was Souzer IT, which was a contract of an, you know, an external entity to come in and run the IT for the district. I heard from the principals and the teachers that there was concerns about the, how quickly they got work done, how efficiently it was done, and how effectively it was done. And those concerns, I shared in a meeting with the leadership of Souzer IT, Adam Souzer, and his number two, his CFO. And we sat down in my first 10 days, and we met to discuss those concerns. Quite specifically, I, I shared with them the outstanding tickets that had not been completed in the months over the summer. I, I shared with them the specific complaints that I heard from teachers and principals. And I said in no uncertain terms that I understood why the former superintendent contracted with them, because what she said to me was, I would, I signed this contract because I didn't think that it was tenable for you to take over all this stuff and have that to worry about, too. And that made sense to me in the moment. So after that meeting, I quite literally, I call it ringing someone's bell, I let them know that they are on notice for the, the performance of the techs and for the director that's assigned to the building. And basically, I said, if as we move forward, we recognize that we're not making progress, then we're going to, I'm going to speak to the lawyer about getting out of the contract. And if we're not satisfied with the performance, we are not going to renew a contract with them. I am meeting with, in fact, it's tomorrow, I'm meeting with a principal and one of the teachers who, who focuses on, on technology in that building, and was one of the persons that replied to me that there was significant concerns with the, the contract and with the company. So I'm meeting with that teacher and the principal tomorrow, and alls I can say is that they understand, and they being Souzer, that there are significant concerns, that they are on notice, and that we are going to make a decision by the end of the year whether we're going to continue with them or not. Everyone I've talked to retroactively has said, we appreciate that, but yet, we're still having ticket concerns, we're still having. So my quandary is, IT is an integral part of what happens in instruction in each of the buildings. And so I have to make sure that there's a transition plan if we determine not to continue with them, and kind of an emergency plan if we pull the plug on them. We have to have something else in place. Technology is too important to what we do day in and day out, in the classroom, in the administrative offices, and with respect to reporting to DESI.
Who ran the IT before Souzer?
Like, we had a director, we had a technology.
My, my understanding, there have been a couple IT directors that have run the show. I know a couple names, but we had an IT director, they were stationed in the library at the high school, and for whatever reason, a year or two ago, they...
So how, I only ask these questions because I'm new to the committee in general. So this Souzer IT is, was last year, I know?
And the year before.
Two, two or three years ago, I think it might have been three.
I think it was like, wasn't it like fall of '21?
Yeah, I think that sounds right.
It was on fall of '21.
The IT director left and the decision.
And when does this contract end?
It was a one-year contract, signed by the former superintendent.
Back in?
The end.
Back in 2021?
No, no, no.
Oh, when she left.
That's what, that's what I was referring to, I'm sorry, I thought you knew that.
So that we still had IT services going forward.
Correct, because her concern.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Dr. Turner, can you remind me what the value of that contract is?
I could find it for you, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
Off the top of your head, if that, if, you know, because there was a lot of discussion, is it better to have someone in-house, is it, you know, and so I imagine that will probably bubble up again.
From you guys, because I don't know, and he doesn't know because he wasn't here, was there a problem with the IT manager?
I don't.
I'm not saying like, but like...
No, no.
No, no, the IT, I think you can say.
The IT director left.
No, I understand that she, okay, so she left, but people weren't...
That's an inconvenient time.
What?
And we needed to...
Okay, okay.
Backfill that immediately, and all those concerns about being able to find a replacement.
Okay.
And...
And it was something she recommended as well.
Yeah.
The former person.
She did recommend?
There was, I mean, to be fair, Souzer, prior to the contract being, came and did presentations to all the school committees, it was a very well-done, well-presented, I think, at the time, and all the committees were in support of bringing Souzer in. So it was not a unilateral decision that was made, it was something that was done based upon the need of the time and...
And many school districts are going in that direction. I think it's a cost savings with respect to a contract, because usually the techs, you know, you can bring more techs on board, there's more capacity within a, a, a company that has 15 techs that they spread out over the course of three districts or whatever the case may be. But in actuality, in the, in the real, in the real world, with what's going on in the buildings, and I just had a meeting today with the principals, and there are similar complaints. So I'm going to revisit my conversation with, with Adam and his, his CFO, but, you know, they're really, they're nice people, they're good people, they're, they're in the buildings, but it's just, we want, we, we need what we need to have happening.
So going forward, if we pull the plug, that's your A decision? And B, contingency plan to figure out?
Yeah, ultimately, you know, ultimately, the, the onus is going to fall on me, I would say. But the decision is going to be a collaborative one.
Right, right, right. I just mean like...
Yeah. And again, it's, it's recognizing what we actually need, and then can we duplicate that with an IT director and two techs?
Right.
Across five districts and five schools?
Right.
That's really the question.
Thank you.
Any other questions on superintendent's report? Okay.
Good information.
Yes, this is wonderful, great information. Chair's report, John's not here, he didn't send me anything to say. Hampshire Regional School Committee.
So we did a lot of what we did tonight, you know, just kind of reviewing what's happening at central office, and, you know, what's, what, what we need to do moving forward, and address some of the same policies that we're going to be looking at. We proved a couple field trips, so our students are continuing to do fantastic things.
New student reps, I got to know who are the new student reps? Do you have new student reps?
Yes, well, one is, one is a student from...
Alicia State.
Alicia Cologne Garcia and Keegan Butler.
And they are both, and, which is unusual, they're both from the same town, sometimes it happens, but, yeah.
12th grade, 11th grade.
Great, that was always my favorite part of these meetings.
Thank you for coming in, and I could not remember her name.
Those were always the best, best part of those meetings were the student reports. Any questions for Hampshire Regional?
Oh, let me add also, I completely forgot, because it was quite the topic of conversation, I mean, I forgot, shunning it out, about the cell phone policy. Because there is continued concern about whether or not taking all the phones and putting them into yonder pouches for the entire day is the appropriate way to deal with the issue. There was concern about whether or not that really constitutes a pilot or not because of the expense associated with it. But it was determined that school committee had given our principal, Hoots, the, you know, the leeway to make some decisions in consultation with staff to develop the type of pilot that she wanted to develop. And in consultation with staff, they determined that it was best to just go whole hog as a pilot with the yonder pouches. And so far, the feedback from a lot of students has been, wow, I'm getting a lot done.
So they're already in place?
That's the, it's in place, it's...
For everyone?
For everyone.
And it's mandatory?
It's mandatory. So, except for if a student has an IEP or a 504 that might require them to take photos of a board, you know, so of course, you know, that, you know, we adhere to all those.
Seven through 12?
Seven through 12.
Seven through 12. I know the seniors would like some senior privileges associated with that, that may come later, but... come later, but, you know, we're doing this right now. There was some concern after what happened in Georgia that, you know, students wouldn't be able to be contacting their parents in case of emergency, which has its pluses and minuses if you're in the emergency response area, having to deal with cell phones in that area. So, you know, I, I think that it's so far, so good. I know that the principal is very pleased with, with the way it's going. And that applies to administrators as well. They are, they are not carrying their phones about, and the teachers are not either. Oh, the other, the only thing I'd say is that one of the suggestions was, you know, could we put a little shoe bag or something in the, each room and then the students drop them off? Well, teachers do not want to be responsible for thousands of dollars worth of phones sitting in their classrooms. And so this takes it out of the teacher's hands. It's very equitable across all grades, in all classrooms, and we'll see. I'll give you an update at the next, our next meeting.
I'll be interested to hear because my brother teaches at a middle school in the town we grew up in, and I had asked after our meeting, I think it was in June, like what their policies were. My sister also is a principal, and he, they use the yonder bags. And it's a choice, it's not mandatory.
Oh, interesting.
But he said a lot of his kids choose to use it. And my sister, when she worked in Lawrence, had them, and it was mandatory. And she's like, it's the best thing.
It is very interesting. Just after that meeting, I started seeing a lot more articles about it. And states doing state mandates, including Florida and California, you know, there, there are a number of places where they are mandating it statewide.
I was going to say, I'm starting to read the book, The Anxious Generation, and it's all about that.
Yep, yep.
So...
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
PTO?
PTO met last night, and they are already off and running with their community activities. You know, the Gascum Social happened last week. They've already started fundraising activities and planning more. They're starting the year with about $30,000 in the bank, but that's also about what they spent last year. So, you know, they know they're going to have to refill, but at least they start with the funds for like a lot of the beginning of the year stuff. A bunch of teacher, staff requests were approved, and they also, every year they do stipends for the teachers. So full-time teachers get $100 stipend, and teachers who work less than full-time get a prorated stipend of $100, just to help defray some of the class, because we know that teachers put a lot of money into classroom stuff. It's a new board of directors, they've, they've taken the reins. They're doing themed meetings, which is nice. Like last night's was pumpkin spice and everything nice. Next month's is apple-tastic or something. Doing, they're doing a lot of social media advertising for meetings and stuff. And their next meeting is October 8th at 6:30 at Norris.
Did they have a good turnout?
They did, actually. It was, it's so nice because like usually you get like the board of directors and like a person, right?
Well, that goes.
Yeah, I know, right? So no, last night they had, they had the board of directors and they probably had a good six or seven other parents. I mean, they, it's really, they're doing a really good job. They've done a lot to promote it, and they're working really hard. And I tell you, the smell of all, they brought, they brought treats last night too. So there was a lot of baked goods and stuff, and they were at the table right behind me, and it smelled really good. So, yeah.
Questions? School council?
School council. So I will be sending out an email soon to parents, looking forward to volunteers to serve on our school council this year. Margaret, are you still?
Yes, I'm ready.
Perfect. Margaret will be the representative. And then we are going to be looking for a community member as well. So if anyone is tuning in and would like to serve on our school council, we will be meeting on Tuesdays about once a month, after school at 3:30 to 4:30.
And it's really fun. It's just a really great way to understand what's happening in the school.
It is. As a parent who did it, it's very useful.
Awesome. Thank you.
Collaborative is meeting September 25th. So I'll have a next update for your next meeting. Select Board update, don't have one. Budget, I think we covered. Is there anything pressing that we need to discuss today?
I really wanted to give Dawn an opportunity to speak.
Title IX policy updates. We're doing a first read of policies ACR, ACA, and ACAB. Does anyone want to talk about these at all, or do we just want to accept this as a first read?
I mean, the, the only really substantive thing to say is that we received an NASC version, and we received a version from Dupre Law Office, and Kimberly Dupre, excuse me, Kimberly Roach, our attorney reconciled those two versions, and that's what we're, we're working on. And Kim Musa, my amazing executive administrative assistant, made sure that, made sure that each of these documents reflects the Southampton School District. And so that's about it.
So we'll take this as a first reading and put it on next month's agenda for ratification. Other, oh, do you want to talk about that, or do you?
No, something else. Nothing big. So I forgot, he's looking at me like, what?
Wait a second.
When you say that, you're like...
No, 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 nothing big, really. I forgot to bring a field trip request form for the students in 4th grade to leave the state of Massachusetts and go to the state of Connecticut, to the Connecticut Science Center in, I believe it's December. I had, I had the paper on my desk and I forgot it before I went to the principal's meeting today. So I could probably bring it to the next meeting, but I think that the parents would like permission slips prior to the next meeting maybe. So is that something that you can approve, or you want me to wait?
May I ask a clarifying question? Just thinking about my experience at West Springfield and East Hampton, if it's out of state and within a certain amount of miles, sometimes it doesn't need that level of approval, and I don't know if that's the case here.
Our practice has always been to approve any out-of-state.
Any out-of-state. Understood.
I think if you, if you give us some more details, we probably can do that. So the cost of it and, you know, and anything that you would have written down. I know, I don't have a...
Who's going? What grade? How many, approximately how many kids?
Grade four. How many kids?
Approximately how many kids is that?
62, 64.
What's the approximate cost?
That I don't know.
Yeah.
It's okay. Being funded partly by parents and PTO.
Where's that, the Connecticut Science?
Connecticut Science Center is in Hartford.
Yep.
As long as it falls within the budget and you are comfortable with this, I'm perfectly comfortable approving it.
This is pretty standard, right? Don't they do this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Every year?
They love it.
Well, not necessarily Connecticut Science Center every year, but every couple of years, I think, Mr. Gold has taken them, yeah.
I'm able to approve the field trip for 4th graders to the Connecticut Science Center.
Second.
Motion made by Margaret, seconded by Jen, to approve the 4th grade class to travel to the Connecticut Science Center on December...
Not sure the date.
December something, 2024.
I will give you all the information as soon as I have it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm sorry. My apologies.
Other, other business that cannot, so we have a, under our budget, five G, which should be B probably, we're going, we have other business that cannot wait until the next regularly scheduled meeting. I was approached by Dr. Perone yesterday about a, or it might have been even today, about a memorandum, memorandum of agreement between the school committee and the Southampton Teachers Association, specifically regarding a additional paid day off for the 24, 25 school year for the teachers who were requested, who were moved from the 5th and 6th graders and the 3rd and 4th graders who kind of flipped wings in the building. Is that correct? That MOA was previously discussed at our last meeting, or that issue was discussed at our last meeting. I've circulated the copy of that memorandum of agreement. I am declaring that, that because this is a 24, 25 school year issue, any further delay of this would substantially impact the committee's ability to properly negotiate a grievance issue with the association, and as such, cannot wait for the next regularly scheduled meeting, and thus falls within our agenda. I will state because this is a memorandum of agreement and potentially does impact collective bargaining, we cannot have any discussion regarding the contents of this memorandum. The basis of it is as I explained, and I will go through it in a little more detail. Specifically, it is to give one additional paid day off that has to be approved by the principal in order to take it. If it cannot be taken, there will be a discussion between the principal and the staff member about when an appropriate day is. It should not fall, butting a school vacation week or a long weekend, I believe, was a consideration as well. It is not considered a continuing past practice or as a precedent for any similar situation that may occur in the future. And it is a full agreement of the parties to enter into this agreement. I might, as my understanding, the administration and the, and the Teachers Association, both are in agreement that this is a resolution that would satisfy the requests of the teachers in the building. So at this point, I would accept a motion for an up and down vote only on approving the chair to sign the agreement on behalf of the school committee.
So moved?
Second.
So moved, motion made by Margaret, seconded by Kim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
The field trip is December 6th, 9 to 3, within school hours, and it's $27 per student, and the parents are paying.
All right.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
Ongoing business, security upgrades, update.
Yes. Okay, it's 90% completed. All the cameras are in. Everything is wired and hard, and hardware is in place. One of the issues that we have are the, the motion sensors, front entryway, let me see, adding audio features at the front entrance with cameras. The, whatever is happening right now with the doors, it is, and, and it's not the magnet, it's something else. It's like a sensor. It's, it's too sensitive right now so that if the wind blew and the alarm was on, and it shook the door a little bit, that the alarm would go off. So they're fixing that, based on something before. But the new door contacts are going to be added and two motion detectors installed in the hallways, and that should be in the next few weeks. Trying to work with the company to say, can we, can we get this finished? And then they're going to be doing sort of like a overview for myself, my admin team, the custodians, and my secretary, so that we know how to use the system. The system is not up and running yet. Shouldn't say it out loud, but anyway. You know what I'm saying?
Any other questions?
So, is it sensitive enough that if some, like kid or something after hours came and like pulled on it, would, would that make?
It shouldn't. It shouldn't.
But given the situation right now, it might.
Because the magnets, right? But if it were to be breached, I don't know. Right now, it's, it can't be opened because we replaced all the magnets, because we had that issue last year where the magnets were not, the poundage of the magnet or something that it was, I cannot explain, it wasn't hard, it wasn't, it had worn off over time, and we realized that when someone was able to open the door. Now, it's more of a sensitivity issue with something else that doesn't have anything to do with the magnets.
I, I think it's probably important to say that the building is secured when the doors are closed and locked.
Correct.
And they're no longer are able to brute force the magnet because those magnets have been replaced.
Exactly.
Right.
I think it's important that people hear that and understand that.
I know we also installed a lockdown alarm system.
Oh, yeah, the lights.
Will there be any communications, or has there been communications that have gone home to parents?
Not yet, but there will be. There will be.
Those aren't currently functioning either, right?
Not 100%, no.
Would they go off?
But we have tested them, and they do.
Right.
So there are blue lights on the inside of the building and the outside of the building, and during a lockdown situation only, not a shelter in place, but a lockdown, a true emergency, those lights will be flashing, and it will indicate, and I will teach the parents and any visitors, that if the blue lights are flashing, not to approach the school, not to drop your child off, that we're in a lockdown situation.
They won't go off during a fire drill?
No, they shouldn't. Only during a lockdown.
Any other questions? Okay. Any other ongoing business?
Where are we at, the van?
The van?
Maybe I should have asked.
Thank you for asking.
Sorry.
We were, we are ahead of schedule on the van, meaning we thought that the van would be back at Marquette Ford a little later than it was.
Yep.
So it was earlier, but now it's out being detailed for all the bells and whistles that it needs to comply with the transportation of preschool children. And we are going, we are supposed to have it back before the October 1st deadline that I've been given by Ms. Hoots at Hampshire Regional. She needs the van back that we're borrowing. So we're suppo, I, we are supposed to have it back before then. Today is September 11th, so they told me I would have it before, in a week and a half. So I'm hoping to get it back in a week and a half.
And just my ignorance, is that like a 14-person van with a...
It's a nine.
Nine-person?
We only transport about six, you know, we'd only be able to transport because of car seats, and it's for preschool only, and I have a van driver, yeah.
Great.
And it will be red, which we talked about. I can't wait.
I forgot that it was red.
It'll be nice. You won't miss it.
And it's still going to have the Norris stuff on it, right?
It will. Yes.
I hear a motion to adjourn.
You do.
Second.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, by Kim, seconded by Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion, meeting is adjourned at 7:06 PM.